All right, at 6:30, I call this meeting to order. First off, we'll have the Fledge of Allegiance. Seth, please.
Fledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the April 15th and the May 10th, 2021 regular meeting minutes, the approval of the financial summary fund balances, authorization for payment of bills minus Larry Vincent and Dwayne Nash, and approval of the proposed agenda. Do you have a motion? Seth makes a motion. Do I have a second? Randy seconds in discussion. All those in favor? Carrie's seven zero. Now, we'll need a motion to approve the payment of bills for Larry Vincent and Dwayne Nash. Do I have a motion? Troy makes a motion. Dan seconds in discussion. All those in favor? Carrie's five. The opposed. Remember, that is five zero with two extensions. Paul and Chance. We want to recognize our visitors. Thank you all for coming. And I appreciate you all coming out for the board meeting. MSBA Monthly Board Report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month's day. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at this spring's Missouri Assessment Program testing. Because of the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on schools this year, the State Board of Education decided to continue with the annual MAP testing, but suspend the use of assessment results for accreditation and accountability purposes. Commissioner of Education Dr. Margie Van Deven told those attending MSBA's recent legislative forum, "It's important to use the assessment results to determine where students are academically as we emerge from COVID-19."
But what we're hearing is that kids are actually doing okay so far on some of their reading, and they're at least maintaining. We want to do better. We're focusing on literacy, but they're maintaining. Where they're falling behind is elementary math because of those discrete math skills that are very challenging to do at home a lot. So, in particular, families are more comfortable picking up a book and reading to kids, engaging in those just like we just said our teachers are. And so, some of the discrete math skills, look at that in your districts, look at that in your data right now, and let us know how they're doing because I'm concerned about that.
Van Deven says it's important to know what was effective for Missouri students during the pandemic, where inequities exist, and where to apply resources. The MAP testing window is open through May 28th. Meanwhile, school districts in Missouri and throughout the nation are making decisions about how to use significant new funding available through the American Rescue Plan. Part of that new law includes $7.1 billion to help close the digital divide in education and give school districts flexibility to meet local needs. In Missouri, it's estimated that as many as 23% of students do not have adequate internet access at home to allow them to do schoolwork online. The National School Boards Association is asking the Federal Communications Commission to distribute the new federal funding through the current E-Rate program. NSBA's Chief Advocacy Officer, Chip Slaven, told those attending MSBA's legislative forum, "The money will help provide devices and internet connectivity to students, teachers, and others."
It's a complex, complicated problem, and that it is not one that you hear a legislator or a congressman say, "But we just gave you $7.1 billion, so we fix the problem." I can assure you, we don't fix the problem. It's help. It's a lesson. Last thing, we'll get it. It's going to make a difference for some students temporarily, but long-term, this has got to be a key part. We're talking about school infrastructure, and we're talking about equity and focus on closing this whole work.
NSBA is emphasizing to the FCC the very different challenges public schools are facing with the digital divide, based on their location, economic situation, and other factors, and that no one solution works for every school district or community. If you were just elected to your school board last month, congratulations and welcome to school board service. You are probably aware, state law requires new board members to complete 18 and a half hours of training in your first 12 months of service. MSBA's free certified board member essential training is approved by the State Board of Education to fulfill that requirement. A member of the Holden R3 Board of Education and a member of the MSBA Board of Directors, Georgia Jarman, believes it's important for newly-elected board members to participate in the training as soon as possible.
I think one thing that is important to know is that we've all been to school, and so we believe that we know everything there is to know about school. But the reality is, schoolwork here is really an involved job, and to do it right, you need to understand the law, you need to understand your role, and you need to understand that everything you do needs to be guided by what's best for kids.
You can complete 10 and a half hours of training online and attend virtual or in-person interactive sessions for the remaining eight hours. See the MSBA website for additional details. MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit is set for June 18th and 19th in Springfield. This event features a wide range of topics and speakers related to school board leadership and current issues facing boards of education. We'll also be holding our June Delegate Assembly at the summit, when delegates will be electing statewide officers for the coming year. Every MSBA member board is entitled to have at least one voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly, and we urge your school board to be represented at this important meeting. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Registration information on the Great Ideas Summit is posted on the MSBA website. Also, mark your calendar for the 2021 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators to be held November 5th through 7th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature more than 100 sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, all in a new location in downtown Kansas City. In addition, MSBA Center for Education Safety will be presenting its annual Safe Schools and Colleges Forum on November 4th, also in Kansas City. Get the latest information and guidance on school safety issues for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, next is Public Comments. Doesn't look like we had anybody sign up for Public Comments. And A-Report spotlights, don't have any this month. So, we're on to the Principal and Director Reports. Elementary Principal Dr. Hall is not here. He's over at the pack building, giving away awards tonight. So, we'll start with Middle School Principal, Ms. Patty Nelson.
Okay, so, last time I was going to talk a little bit about MAP. I am very proud of our teachers. They did a wonderful job with helping our students be successful and be prepared in order to take the MAP test. We had a MAP bootcamp thing this year. Teachers made posters. We had some that wore t-shirts. They decorated the halls, made a big deal out of it. We just finished our last grade level report today, where they did, tried to do park days. Not all made it, but they did do some fun activities and movies. Fifth grade also had root beer floats for their students, and it was Town and Country who donated the items for that, so we want to give a shout out to them. Also, we are ready to offer summer school. We have nine classes currently being offered, and we have almost 100 students in the middle schools signed up so far, so great things ahead of us this month.
Thank you. Next, we have High School Principal, Dr. Teresa Nash.
Graduation for the class of 2021 who went great. We are finishing up finals today and tomorrow, and then we'll be ready to start summer school on Monday. We only had one class that was offered that didn't make, and that was auto maintenance. We only had six kids that were interested in that. Otherwise, we have about 150 students signed up, and we're going to be offering alternative school, personal finance, PE, lifetime fitness, well-being, bill credit, band leadership, color guard, and professional classes this year.
Thank you. Special Service Director, Ms. Dalton is not here, and Maintenance Director, Marla Valentine is not here, so that is Food Services. Mrs. Food Services, Mrs. Yvonne Honor Camp.
We did a lot of packed lunches and helping with all the kids that had their extravagances this month. We got everybody through even with our brain issues that we had. Middle School, eighth grade, got to come over and, she wasn't into the grill today, but she got come and pulled in. She came over and grilled tons of hot dogs for her buddy, and everybody got fed, and they were all happy, so that was pretty successful. Our numbers are up over, I think, over 32,000, I think, is what we're at total for the last month. Got everything organized for summer. I got my side. Got everything organized for summer school, and got the menu out for the rest to the end of the month, and I'll be working on June's. Probably this weekend, take my work home with me. So, if there's any suggestions, still looking for that. We've got the main entree, but we're also going to offer either a salad, a wrap, or a sandwich for the kids that may or may not like what we've got serving for our main entree. And I've been with all the principals, kind of got with them on how we're going to serve everything, and it looks like it's going to run, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you. Next, we're at Executive Administration Reports. Start with Dr. Dalton.
I'll just touch briefly on summer school. We will not be in the elementary. Elementary and middle school will be in the elementary building, just because, that's what I meant. Elementary and middle school will be in the middle school building. Dr. Hall and Mrs. Nelson have worked all of that out, just because of the asbestos removal in the elementary, just wanted everybody to know. We did have a lightning strike last weekend during the thunderstorm, knocked out seven switches. We were able to piece it together for a couple of days until those new switches came in. That is an insurance claim, so I think the total of it was 37,000. We first thought it was going to be closer to 50, but we had some come back up, so about $37,000 are expensive. We got $2,000 for that, so we actually got lucky. A couple of those were nearing end of life anyway, so we got brand new switches. They were next day aired to us, so John got all those put in. J-Mark had them in the system and ready, so as soon as they hit the network, the programming downloaded, they did about 12 hours to come up, but so, anyway, I appreciate J-Mark and John for getting that done. Legislative session is over, so financially, fully funded formula, stay at equity target does not move again this year, so it's at 63.75. So, we'll look at pretty level funding. Prop C is up. We anticipate that being a transportation was passed at a pretty equal level, so we'll budget the same dollars for transportation we did this year. But overall, it was a pretty good legislative session. The only bill that passed that is truly worrisome is House Bill 349. It's funny, it passed out of the House early, it passed the Senate late, and then the Senate passed an amendment to it after they already passed the bill. So, it is basically an ESA program or an Education Savings Account Program tax credit, so you can save, reduce your tax burden by putting money into Education Savings Account, a little bit like the 529 plan that you can use for college, but this is used for private or parochial school. And then, but it only affects counties of 30,000 or more. So, you're really looking at St. Louis County, Jackson County, Cass County, whatever county, Boone County, and Greene County at this point. The amendment that passed dropped the cap, I believe, to $50 million a year is the most that can be contributed totally statewide, but we'll see. There's a lot of push for the governor not to sign it. He's got a couple of weeks to decide if he's going to sign that bill or not, so. S R 2, we have been able to enter our budget into S R 2. Revisions can be entered as plans change and bids for projects are finalized. I've made a couple revisions already to it for the asbestos, and those have been approved, and we made a revision for the Promethean, the second set of Promethean boards we bought for the high school. S R 2 is going to pick up the cost for those. So, we're well on our way with that. S R 3 guidance has not come out from the federal government yet. We did get spending authority at the state for S R 2. We will not see spending authority from the state for S R 3, probably until the veto session in October. So, we don't have guidance for it anyway, but S R 2 spending authority, so we could, we will make requests for reimbursements in June from S R 2, so we'll be able to start drawing down $80,000. So, that is all I have at this point. Tomorrow is the last day of school. It is a full day, much to some teachers' chagrin. I have blamed it on the guy that was in charge of the calendar committee, but we are going to, we are going a full day, so we hit our 1,044 hour. We have to go 1,044 hours. We have to go a full day tomorrow to get that 1,044 hours. But I did get mugged by a group of elementary teachers on the bus line last week, and I said, "The tall guy at the end of the line was in charge of the town." So, anyway, we've had a good year. We really have had a good year. It's been a successful year. You know, if you think about it, when you look at everybody around us, we had one grade level out of school for seven days, fifth grade. Other than that, you know, we have had, I think, last count, I have 474 kids that have been quarantined one to 10 days, and we had had 68 positive cases of employees, students in the district. That's nothing to complain about. We've done really well. Teachers have worked extremely hard. Our custodial staff has worked extremely hard, and it has been a burden on our kitchen staff. When you try to feed groups of students in three different places, it's difficult, but everybody has stepped up to the plate, and we're going to be rooting for your show, so very proud.
Very good, thank you. Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Dalton.
Dr. Nash mentioned graduation. We had 51 of our seniors, I believe, finished up qualifying for A+ which is great. Love the number to be more of it. You know, you'll have some just because of whether they're going to go to school, don't choose to do the tutoring now, or some things like that, but that's just under 60% of the class. Summer school numbers, these ladies mentioned it, we are looking at just over 500 kids that have signed up for summer school. Most years, we have tried to recruit kids for classes to make. This year, we have tried to recruit teachers to help cover some of the classes. I think some of us, to get pulled in, which is getting early to a different, like, we just have some huge classes, which is great. You know, we were, as you start this planning process, just kind of years ago, we didn't know, and the man for summer school classes has been great, so looking forward to that. Something we'll follow up on, you heard part of the conversation there about internet accessibility, so we had something come across our desk. Class, we, Mrs. Maddy is working on it, FCC's Emergency Broadband Benefit Program launch, actually, I think, went into effect late last week, or middle of last week. Where we come into play there, one of the ways that families can qualify is if they qualify for free or reduced lunch. There's actually some documentation that they need from the school to, just one of the ways for them to confirm that to be eligible. So, Mrs. Maddy is in the process of writing those reports and getting that information together. It's kind of time consuming. It's everybody's name on that different form. It's not just running that form, making 600 copies. It's changing that information, but we're in that process, so that we'll have some panels that are eligible for that. So, that's got a chance to be an impactful program. We did get some information, part of the S R funds were allocated specifically to recruiting teachers, Grow Your Own specifically. We had $10,000 earmarked specifically for Grow Your Own, which I know is a conversation we've had. So, Mrs. Swatter is already, she's in contact with other districts that have existing programs. We're trying to map that out and plan, so that'll be, it's something we already were moving forward with, but anytime you have some funds, a lot of times it can, it can help you start those programs, so that's something we were excited to see. The other thing I wanted to follow back up on, I talked maybe last month, we'd sat down with teachers during our April meeting, looked at a needs, wants list, for additional things, for those resources, classroom supplies, tables versus desks, just different things like that, online resources. So, I'm closing in on, my number's just short of $400,000 worth of new things now. Some of that includes personnel, which obviously make up a big chunk of that, but where we're at right now, so as we're moving into finalizing budget, projections and plans coming towards the end of the year, you know, we are, we're sitting down, some of these things are things, some of them are things we already covered, some of our building budget items, some of them are going to be S R fund items, but that's where we're at. Had a team, we're going to sit down next week and just try to pinpoint, all right, these are the things we can tackle right now. We would love to be able to mark everything off this list, but that's going to be tough to do one year. Some of them are projects that we're going to be working on, but just wanted to follow up on that. Been trying to, still waiting on a few quotes on some of the resources or materials that folks had asked about, but just like to make progress on that list. Any questions?
All right, thank you. So, we are up to our discussion and action items. First on the list is 21st Century Guided Reflection.
So, our 21st Century program, we received this, the second part of this grant, so we received it in 2012, received it again in 2017, and we have to have an external evaluator look at our program, talk to our kids, talk to teachers, talk to parents. John Turner is our external evaluator. He's a professor at Missouri State. Got really good feedback from him. I uploaded the reflection from him to you, so we look at, really look at the goals or academic achievement and efficacy, program quality, and youth outcomes. Really, the takeaway I took from it, the biggest takeaway is students that attend the Bear Steen program have better attendance, higher grades, and lower discipline issues. So, they are making impacts on those kids. So, those are the three takeaways when I read it, that I got from it. We just need to approve it because it's part of those grant guidelines. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you. It's a good program. It's a great, it's a great service to our community.
I agree. So, do we need a motion yet to approve the guided reflection? Guided reflection. So, we'll take a motion to approve 21st Century Guided Reflection as presented. Chance makes the motion. Do I have a second? Troy, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carrie's seven zero. Next on the list is Capital Projects.
All right, so, I have uploaded a list of capital projects for you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to send that out to you tomorrow in a survey for you to rank what you think's the most important thing we need to do, and then what we do every year is we're going to go down through the budget and try to catch as many things as we can possibly catch. So, the first two, the asbestos removal and replacement, that's already been approved. We've got middle school gym entrance concrete replacement, it's going to run 30 to, so those are the steps in front of the middle school gym, that's $30,000 to $40,000. Kindergarten playground wall replacement, so those are built with six-by-sixes, and they're starting, we've been replacing some every year, building new walls every year just because of age, they start to rot. We've been trying to attack that. Preschool parking lot expansion, that is up on Mansfield Street. We use half a block, just, it's getting a little crowded. We probably need to expand that to that hole, that north, north end of that block. High school secure main entry, that would replicate the elementary main entry, just be at the high school. We don't think that's going to be terribly expensive because of the way it's set up, it's about $40,000. Middle school lockers, it's a fairly large expense, but they are aged. Is that the right word to use? Hard-to-get parts, that's $89,000. Elementary kitchen dishwasher is older than the lockers, so it's about $11,000. Carpet replacement in the high school business labs, the office in the library, it's just really old carpet that is, looks bad, whether it be stained up or just worn out, that's right at $20,000. Asphalt ceiling and filling of cracks, that's just, that's all the asphalt around the district. We need to get that on a schedule, or I'm not doing it all at once, but the bid we have on that's $14,360.
Did you do everything?
Yeah. Asphalts, I already said that, fourth grade exterior doors, we repaired those last summer. They are working, but they are old doors. That's going to be, so last summer, that, I don't have an official bid, but last summer when we did kindergarten, it was about $5,500, so I anticipated, it's gone up a little bit, so I anticipate we'll do that for about $6,500. And then, the big one on the list is elementary and high school drainage. So, in the front of the elementary and the north end of the elementary, it's just low spots. Water comes to the building, and then, right back here in this parking lot, if you get big rains, this drain actually goes out to the street, but it's been crushed somewhere in between. So, I had Greg Crawford come, Bonnie and I met with Greg Crawford. He's done, he's built several buildings here on campus for us. He's out of Marshville, and he brought, he's a big excavator here in town. I don't know what was his name. He brought a guy that works with him that lives here in town. And so, they, and then Greg brought an engineer down and looked at it, so it's about $150,000 to tackle all of that. They would run the kindergarten area on that north end of the elementary, they would French drain that all the way around, and then run it back out to the street. The front of the elementary, they would French drain all of that, all the way to, over by the fire station, and then back here, they would dig, dig it up back here, and they would have to cut part of the parking lot, and they would take it out to the storm drain in the street by Jefferson. So, we can tackle that in phases over a couple of year period, but that is a, and Greg would do it. But that is a, and Greg would do it on time deterrence. We'd obviously have to get, have to get another bid because it is expensive unless we broke it down before.
Is it infiltrating buildings or is it just holding?
It does in the, at the elementary with big rains. And it does here with larger rains, it infiltrates the locker room areas or flood those locker room areas. So yes, it is, we have fixed part of that, patched part of that, but it is a continual issue from the elementary. It's probably the worst and this is the second. Kindergarten would be the third or secondary. Any questions about the capital projects?
District funds and COVID money being used.
So COVID money is being used for the asbestos, the rest of the district dollars.
Like the doors could be security that they would use under SRF?
I'll look, I'll look for that. I don't remember security, and we are looking at some grants that could possibly cover those. I actually talked to Marcella and Mr. Reed today about a grant that we're going, that we've actually talked to John Turner, who's our outside evaluator for 21st Century, because he writes lots of grants to get some advice. So we are looking at a grant to help with that.
So was that just the elementary doors? Yes. And how many was that?
Those are two at fourth grade.
Two?
Yeah.
Now, wasn't there a, you know, it seems like I remember sometime back that we replaced the doors and then we put different lock systems in and all that. So we were repairing things?
Yes, and this would be a total replacement.
And that covers yet up to, up to date on the locks and security?
So we've been putting, so when we put a new set of doors in, we put key swipe access. So.
And that, that Monday coverage, yeah, or two doors.
So that's what we did in kindergarten.
Are they going to replace the drain line out here or are they going to?
Dig it up and replace it or abandon it, put a new one in, one of those two.
Do they either fix the old one or put a new one?
No, it sounds like put a new one in either way.
Yeah, replace the old one or put a whole new one in the gap there.
In a different location. So there's a ton of electricity right here. So Greg's thinking, if we, once he gets it located, if he can stay on the grass part and not dig up the asphalt, that's what he's going to try to do. He's just worried about the electrical that runs from the building to the A-PAC. He's got to locate that and figure out the best path to the storm drain.
Have we got anything from the security walk the other day?
So we have not got a reaction, we talked about that today, we should be getting it any day now.
So, okay, so now this is anything to?
Well, the doors, those are conversations I had, but yeah, that's, we should be getting that any day. Anyway, so I will be sending that survey out to you. If you can do that as quickly as possible, I'll text you and I'll email it to you. If you can do that as quickly as possible, I appreciate it because we are in the middle of building that budget. We need to try to incorporate what we.
Unlike in the past, we'll rank those individually.
Yes, we'll rank them individually and then we work down as far as we can work.
So no motion needed?
No motion needed.
No further discussion on that, we'll move on to salary committee presentation.
Mrs. Tate is a member of the salary committee and she graciously has agreed to present to you. This is what she has, so.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Tate, as he said. I'm here tonight represent, as a representative of the salary committee, which is made up of people of all different buildings and has support staff as well as faculty. Thank you for allowing me time to speak this evening. Our committee asked Dr. Dial and Mr. Dalton to put together some possible alternatives to the $3,000 incentive that was approved earlier this year. While we do appreciate the generous incentive, we would like for you to consider some alternative recommendations. We feel these might be better for the district and employees more long term. So the first one is summer school pay will increase to $180 per day, which is up from 125, which has been the daily rate for the past several years. Currently, employees have sick leave and personal leave. Both leaves will be combined to PTO, which is paid time off. So we're not necessarily, when we submit our paperwork, we're not having to code it one way or another. Leaves of grant, limits of leave granted and accumulation amounts will remain the same. Turner's pay will increase to $25 per hour from up to $2250. The early resignation incentive for December 1st resignations of certified staff will increase from 400 to 1,000 for the '21, '22 school year only. And that was put in there because I think a lot of people that were retiring next year were a bit upset with maybe changing this because they didn't feel like that would benefit them. But this will kind of help offset that for the retiring folks so they feel like they're still getting a good incentive also. Defined contribution from the district for employees qualified for health insurance will increase from $470 per month to $500 per month. The base teacher salary will move from $31,575 to $33,075, a $1,500 increase on the base. Each teacher will also receive a step for experience. Non-certified and admin will receive a 3.51% increase as well. Total cost of this increase is $387,367.88. Each certified employee will have the opportunity to receive a $1,000 PD stipend this summer, which will be identified by Mr. Dalton and Mrs. Payne. Each non-certified employee will have the opportunity to receive an additional $333 for additional training as outlined by Mr. Dalton and Mrs. Payne. These recommendations were overwhelmingly supported by our faculty and staff. Out of 109 respondents on a survey, 84.5% were in support of this proposal. Thank you for your time and consideration and can I answer any questions for you?
Was it said to you that the previous board had set aside that $3,000 intended on giving you that plus a very good package? Did you guys all know that?
We, we had, we had several long meetings over this issue and this just seemed like maybe what was better for the district long term. I think everybody wants what's best for the district. I mean, yes, we all want a big raise, but if we don't want to, I don't think there's any teacher here that wants to see the district be put in a situation that might be harmful later. I mean, I, I want what's best for the district, whether I'm here one years or 10 years. I live here, this is, this is my community, I want to do what's best. And I think overwhelmingly, people were concerned that maybe, we don't want to do so much, we get ourselves in a bad situation later.
How, how did you feel you, it might get in a bad situation later?
It was going to be a substantial amount of money to do both. I can't remember the numbers, Dr. Dial shared them with us. I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was a substantial amount of money. And I would hate to think that we did that and would lose teachers down the road or lose programs. I would way rather let you keep your $3,000 incentive and make sure we have teachers on what we need later. That's just me personally. If it's better for the district.
So that's how it was presented to you then? That, that given more would have hurt the school?
Well, it was a concern, it was a concern that we had that it might hurt the school later because it was such a substantial amount of money. We were concerned that this could be detrimental later on. There was also some concern about, you know, how do we, how do we code this? Because you can't give teachers bonuses. And a lot of teachers were not, we were going to have to do a log. And we were going to have to fill a log out and we, a lot of teachers like, I don't want to do that. I have enough to do without filling out a log to get this incentive. They would rather put it on the base, do the $1,000 PD. You're coming out about the same, especially if we add to the health insurance, it's, it's pretty close. And that $1,500 will be there next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, we appreciate Mrs. Tate. So if we, we could choose to go ahead and, and act on that, if the board chooses to or do something in June, we probably have to do it one way or the other.
I mean, first off, it sounds like to me, if they don't want the original, what was done from the original or from the school board passed, do we not need to rescind that? I mean, 84 and a half percent is overwhelming that, I mean, I think we should have went to the salary committee in the first place. I mean, just my opinion. You know, I, I would like to make a motion to rescind that one.
So you make a motion to rescind?
I've got it wrote out here. I would like to make a motion to rescind the previous motion passed on April 1st, 2021, made by Ms. Parsick and seconded, seconded by Mr. Johnson to pay a lump sum to all certified of $3,000 and non-certified of $1,000 to accept employment for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So that's made a motion, do I have a second? Brandon seconds, any discussion?
On this page that Dr. Dial has passed out, it says down here, there will be an early resignation incentive for December 1st resignations incentive. That's the same thing we're trying to give them on the $3,000 incentive.
It's current board policy.
So is this incentive illegal? Because there was a discussion about whether or not this was legal or illegal. So if the $3,000 and the $1,000 we're trying to give them is illegal, then the resignation incentive is illegal. Would that be correct?
So it is.
There's no time and effort there.
So, correct. So it is, it's a current board policy. I mean, we get into some, I understand what you're saying. SRF is an issue, we talked about that. You can't have a bonus through SRF dollars, these are district funds that would pay that. PSRS does allow the early resignation incentive.
We have funds available that we could use for, our funds, not necessarily SRF funds. Because we're going to end up using SRF funds probably to pay payroll. According to what I read in DESI information, we can actually pay teacher salaries with SRF funds. And put those funds into our regular money. So we're not illegal, I just want to get that part clear. We're either illegal when we do the signing incentive or the resignation incentive or we can't be both.
So that's part of it. So the question that I had was about the SRF fund, so with the signing incentive, you can do, you can do that with your local dollars. Yeah, there's a way you can do it.
You can do it, yes. You can do it.
So when we made that motion, it was our intent to come back and do, you know, teacher salary later. Personally, I believe there's enough money in there to do both. It's, last year, I remember Dean was on the salary committee and they were given like five options. And all five options added up to about, or maybe six. Those all added up to about $130,000.
But last year, the top one was only $180.
Okay, $180 is what we finally ended up giving them, was it not?
Yes.
And that was $50,000 more than what we recommended.
Correct.
So what they were going at and they were being offered was five options. And it was like they didn't have a choice, it was how do you want your money? You're going to get $130,000 until we came in and actually leveled it in $150. That's what, best I can remember to happen. So I assume that's probably what was happening this time. And you're almost where I want to be, but what I would like to see, now, here's another thing. If you have one teacher that wants to continue to get this incentive, any A is probably going to come in and represent that teacher. The problem we have, and this is something, just my opinion, I'm not an administrator, but it's my understanding, we're supposed to have all those teacher salaries in place by May 15th. And we don't do it until we do the budget in June. And Missouri statutes, 168, 100 or something like that, states, that's the way I read it, but I'm not an attorney. Anyway, I feel like that we are in a legal position where we should not revocate that, that we should try to get the teachers to sign voluntarily. And some of them I assume don't want to sign. I think we're going to create a legal issue.
I think, I think a decision on this needs to be postponed until we get multiple opinions from attorneys. Because we could very easily get into a legal situation here.
Because of the date? Because of the date that?
We have to notify teachers whether they're renewed by April 15.
Correct.
As far as setting teacher salaries.
Setting what it was until it's changed. We just sound like we said.
I've never been in a district that did it by May 15.
I would be wrong, maybe it just never came up before.
Well, what you're signing is previous salary schedule, which is fine. And then once a new budget's adopted and one of their increases, then it's on one, it's not in the main.
We can at least look at those previous contracts and then if we choose to add it, we can do it.
That's how I understand that.
I don't know about the, the teacher's salary, but because it went out to, and teachers have signed their contracts thinking they're going to get this $3,000. And there was an email went out on it. There's possibilities there may be, but they, some of them will have legal recourse on it.
They didn't sign a document, it was not in their contract, their contract was their regular teaching contract.
There was an email went out to them and told them they were going to get it. And that will, you know, and I understand the contract, but that email may change things.
It's totally up to you all, what you want to do. I, I did ask the question to be sure that I was correct. And I was told that if, if the teachers requested something different, the board could revoke the previous motion and move forward with a different plan. Because I, I wanted to be sure that I was correct.
I mean, who are we doing this for? It's for the teachers. I mean, I, I think they need a hand in telling us.
There, there, there's another little wording down here on the bottom of this that bothered me. And the thing was the COVID money. And it says down here that, you know, it says something about being sustainable. It's one, you know, it, it was a one-time deal and it was COVID money, so there's no sustaining there. And I don't know why that was down there.
What are you reading?
I think he's reading one up there. Right, it's very volatile.
Right, it's very volatile. And I, and I wonder if maybe that didn't have bearing on what the teachers felt like, I mean.
They didn't see that, that wasn't. This is what I typed up for the salary committee.
But did they understand that, that $3,000 was not going to be a reoccurring payment from the teachers?
It was a one-time payment.
Due to, due to possible legal consequences. I think, I think we need to put that out until we get, not just one, but multiple opinions from attorneys.
To see if we can rescind that, to see if it's. To see if we can rescind that, to see if it's multiple opinions on rescinding that former motion? Because it, because we weren't, it, what was considered, I think Dan just addressed that it was not legal to use ESSR funds to give that incentive.
I didn't, I didn't mean to say that, that's the aggression of that, I don't know, but I know we can, if we don't use it, we can do it correctly.
If the incentive in, in the, in the retirement deal was, was legal, then the other was legal, you know, you couldn't have, have both, both ways, but be that as it may, there's still a possibility that some of the teachers will have and will take legal action against us as a district. And if you vote on this tonight, tomorrow's a brand new day, I mean, they have it tomorrow, you know.
NEA and MST A, and I don't know how many MST A teachers there are out there, both of those groups say that the incentive was legal. And I know NEA is just waiting to go.
Somebody give us something that said it was illegal though, to give incentives with, well, it was ESSR money.
To change that just a little bit, I'll contest these out. I just want to state some facts that probably not every board member digs up, or not every administration brings to them, but this concerns Ava and where they're at. The top, the very top is the sources where I pulled this information from, and then you got a definition of the livable wage, which is just a decent standard of living. But the average nationwide teacher salary used in 2021 data is sixty-four thousand five twenty-four per year. Missouri is currently ranked forty-fifth in all the states with an average teacher pay of fifty thousand nineteen per year. Mississippi is currently ranked the last with an average teacher pay of forty-five thousand one oh five, but a teacher's starting pay in Mississippi at the lowest certified level is thirty-seven thousand per year. The state with the lowest average starting pay is Montana at thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighteen per year. Montana does have a livable wage at forty-seven thousand per year. According to the Missouri NEA, the Ava school district comes in at an average teacher salary of forty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Ava's starting pay is thirty-one thousand five seventy-five. Ava teachers have an average of thirteen point seven years experience, and what I pulled up off of the NEA is sixty-six point eight percent have a master's degree. Missouri has a livable wage of forty-six thousand per year. A teacher with a four-year college degree will meet the average teacher pay or a livable wage numbers in thirty-four years. A teacher that gets their master's degree under the current pay formula will work fifteen years to meet the average district pay of forty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one, and then they'll have to work nineteen years with a master's degree to finally meet the livable wage. It is not uncommon for a new certified teacher at Ava with a four-year college degree to have a take-home pay of less than five hundred a week after all deductions, retirement, taxes, insurance, et cetera. Twenty-twenty data provided by the Missouri NEA shows that the average Missouri superintendent pay is one twenty-two, two seventy-one. The same data shows superintendents at the Ava district at one forty-seven, three sixty-one. For administrators, principals, the same data shows Missouri average of ninety-five thousand five thirty-nine per year with Ava's average at ninety thousand seventy-eight. National average pay for elementary, middle, and high school principals is ninety-eight thousand four ninety, we currently have principals above and below that number. So these are the facts that I pulled up, and what I'm getting at, what I, what I get from it, is the Ava school district's starting pay is almost the same as Montana, which has the lowest average starting pay in the nation. The Ava school district's average pay of forty-three thousand seven sixty-two is lower than Mississippi, which is the lowest average teacher pay in the nation. The salaries of our superintendents and administrators in our district fall in line with or above national and state averages. During my time on the board, I have had the opportunity to sit in on two separate salary committees for the district and watch firsthand how this process works. The superintendent meets with the committee and suggests several salary option packages. The committee then chooses one of the options, and they express their wishes and concerns. The choice decided upon then becomes the recommendation presented to the board and is usually approved. In the past, there have been a couple organized boards that have tried to address the problem and take steps to fix the problems, only to be followed by future boards that take two steps back and let the problem persist. The boards that did try to fix the problems have had the insight to see the funds were there and have given certified and non-certified more than what was offered, and each time has worked out fine with plenty of money left in each fund. This is a year where there are and will be more funds available than any other time, to my knowledge. This is the year to take a large step in repairing this expanding problem we have with certified pay, but instead, we are once again barely moving forward, and that's, that's what I take from the law. I, I feel that we can do a lot better than what we have been doing, and this year is a good year to start. There's, there's, there's more money this year than there has been in the past. A lot of these bullet points on here, we're already going to be done, we wanted to do them actually before now. Summer school, all that has already been discussed. It looks like there's a lot of stuff there, really, you're down to about three things that have been added, and, you know, yeah, it, there's some good stuff there, but we, we need to do better. Even if we do this for five years, it's not going to get us where we need to be on base pay.
So what you wanted to do is do the three thousand and one thousand, that was previously approved by the board on April 1st, and do this as well? See, this seems like, the, what I can tell is, from the salary committee and the responses, out of the responses, we got an overwhelming response in favor of this instead of the three thousand and one thousand, and DESI says that we can even use the, do the sign on.
We've got a motion on the floor, and we'll weigh with it, it's seconded, and that motion needs to be taken care of actually before we get into whatever kind of raise that we're going to get.
I know, I was speaking of that, say, we're trying to do both, or, and can we even afford that? Because this actually went through the processes that probably it should have, went through the salary committee, and was looked at, and even had teacher input on it.
There's only one way a salary committee is going to be talked into less money whenever they're in the predicament that I just said, and that is fear. They have been presented fear that our district will not be able to afford it. Otherwise, they'd have took the money because they're underpaid. Four-year college students.
I'm going to ask a question, because I don't, I'm not following, so the two scenarios that were presented, so as I understand it, the teachers are asking for that scenario because in the long run, it's more money? So I'm, I'm not following your train of thought there.
Well, what I, whenever I voted back, when we made that vote and Dean made the motion. What I understood was that, that three thousand and one thousand was something completely different than what we were going to bring to the committee.
Right.
Completely different.
But that, I mean, that's, that's almost part of the thousand dollars.
And really, the three thousand and one thousand wasn't even going to be brought to them, that was already something that was done. And then we're going to talk about, with that three and one, if you did both, that would be a good package. I'm fine, if, if we can't do the three and one, let's bump more up on this base. Let's bring it up another thousand.
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
But let's make something that'll make a difference.
So the three and one is four hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars? I mean, however we look at that, that, I mean, that money's going to come from somewhere. So that money impacts what is on the base?
It's two different parts.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
One would be reoccurring and one would not be.
No, no, that I agree with.
That makes a big difference.
When you say that, when you say that they chose less money, I'm not understanding that. I'm not following your train of thought there. I, I know what you're saying, one's recurring, one's not, I agree with that.
So I'm saying that if we're not going to do the three and one, let's look at putting that base up a little bit higher, you know, let's bump it up to maybe another thousand.
Have you looked at that?
Have you looked at?
And do we have a breakdown of this three hundred and, what is it, three eighty-seven, three sixty-seven? Can we see how much of that is certified? Going to certified and how much is going to other?
I don't have that broken down, because of my spreadsheet.
Yeah, I mean, that would help us to be able to know what we're looking at.
My spreadsheet has every employee in the district in it. That's okay.
Lowell is right, we have a motion, and we should vote on it, but if it helps, I have a proposal. I would like to take, first of all, let me back up, the thirty dollars from the four seventy to five hundred dollars for insurance, people get this all confused, and if y'all are in agreement, we should go on PD Day and tell these teachers it's all the same plot, because the thirty dollars that went toward their insurance did not go toward their raise, it's, it's all a raise. Problem is, is if you don't take school insurance, you don't get that three hundred and sixty dollars, whether you're certified or non-certified. If you're, if you're a teacher with a spouse, and you get your insurance through where your spouse works, you don't get that three hundred and sixty dollars. So really, the three hundred and sixty dollars should be included with the fifteen hundred so you're eighteen sixty.
And then everybody gets it.
Right, everybody gets it, it's fair to everybody.
So do away with the thirty dollars in the insurance?
If you don't take the school insurance.
I'm, I'm moving to amend the motion.
Can we do that with the?
Yep, you bet we can.
Okay. To amend the motion that Seth has currently made?
To bump the base pay. Before I, before I do this, answer a question, because that way, everybody sitting here is going to be on the same page, and we got two new board members. If we bump the base pay, if we bump the base pay a thousand dollars, every teacher gets a thousand dollar raise, correct?
Correct. So every teacher right now, a teacher is either going to get a two thousand dollar raise because they get their step, or they're going to get a twenty-one hundred and seventy-five dollars, one or the other.
That's the second question for the new board members. Explain to them the step that every teacher gets every year.
So every teacher with years of experience gets, if they are less, bachelors to masters, I'm going to do this off the top of my head, but around ten years, they get five hundred. If you go, if you're above a masters and you're below ten year, if you have more than ten years, you get six hundred and seventy-five. If the base does nothing, that's what you get. And then whatever happens to the base, that rolls all the way through the salary schedule.
So, so every, every year, the teachers get a step.
Right.
Irregardless of any kind of other raises they get. Now, I'll, I'll make the motion. To bump the base pay three thousand.
To move it up?
Yes.
The motion is to rescind the original motion.
That's an amendment to the motion, we have a motion on the floor to do away with the incentive, and we have an amendment to that motion to bump the base pay three thousand.
Of two three thousand or three thousand?
From fifteen hundred to three.
From fifteen hundred to three thousand.
To three thousand.
They're asking for fifteen, I'm asking, I'm bumping three thousand.
On the base.
On the base. Whatever Danny was talking about on the, uh...
What are the motions to rescind that, so?
To read these ones.
The motions to rescind the previous.
The motion to rescind, the, the incentive motion that we made back on April 1st, the amendment is to bump the base pay three thousand on the teachers, plus they get their step.
So, so what he's doing, in short, is he's amending it so that we might possibly have a seven oh vote. If the amendment goes through, then we vote for the complete package.
Are you going to, is, is the plan to rescind the three thousand and one thousand?
Yes. That's the motion that's currently made.
That didn't change, it comes out earlier.
You're going to have to, if you rescind it, in my opinion, you're going to have to have teachers sign off on it. Now, don't forget, you got hourly staff that was promised a thousand dollars, I don't know exactly how that's going to work out, but somebody else is going to have to figure that out besides me. I think most of the teachers would, it's a no-brainer, would sign off on what Lowell's talking about.
I think part of the issue is, is that the math of what that's going to cost to the district?
That's a close guess.
Estimate of almost seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, almost seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what you're talking about.
You're, you're only talking about...
And you're talking about reoccurring expenses. This is, in my opinion, this is, you tell me, you've been doing the budget, this seems like a bad plan, I mean, we do have more money than we ever had, but a reoccurring expense is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Nobody's seconded my amendment, so I can change my amendment, so talk to me, tell me what's sustainable.
Let me tell you, you're talking about the dollars per teacher, eleven hundred and eleven hundred and sixty dollars more than what's currently out there, times a hundred teachers, so you're talking about somewhere over a hundred thousand dollars, which is, I'd have to figure that up, point seven or eight percent of our budget, probably.
Where do you get that number at then?
We're fifteen hundred, and then you're adding another fifteen hundred per teacher, plus all the incentives here.
You're not quite adding fifteen hundred, I'm just telling you what the numbers are, because the, the insurance was...
Go ahead.
I'm just talking about teachers, if you've got a hundred teachers in your lineup, you've already got, you've got fifteen hundred plus three sixty, so you're eighteen sixty, count what's in there for the insurance, and go to three thousand, you're down to eleven hundred and forty dollars per teacher.
I'm talking about the total, not the...
Talking a hundred, a hundred teachers, you're add two zeros on the end.
It's fourteen and a half.
Fourteen percent.
Plus six percent.
So you're saying six, six percent doesn't go to teachers, they're not paying social security?
Medicaid, it's, it's fourteen and a half Medicaid, it's everybody. That's, that's twenty-plus percent is what that comes to. I mean, that's, that's, whatever the number is, that's what you're taking in times.
It's probably closer to seventeen percent, because Medicaid's what, two and a half percent right here?
So you're saying to take it up to three thousand and eliminate all of this that they brought to us?
I'm telling you, I'm telling you the numbers.
Dr. Doyle, you've been doing some scratching over there.
So that is, I'm, this is a guess off the top of my head, I'm just going to give you the, just the salary portion of it, and the, you guys, I'm sorry, but I got to bring you into this, okay? Because, because it affects you. Seven seventy-five, I think is a close, is a close number, and then there's another forty-five thousand dollars for contracted transportation, because they're guaranteed that same increase, so you're looking at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars recurring cost.
You know, I'm talking about increasing certified, and it's not, it's not, it's not always necessary that you have, every time you increase certified, you have to do the same percentage for non-social.
Okay.
You know, you know what I'm coming from?
I understand what you're saying, I, I think that...
We, we, I mean, the board has helped out the open employees when it was time to, they've helped out the buses when it was time to, we've helped out maintenance people. You don't always have to get, when you're trying to fix one big problem, you don't have to always match it up to everybody.
I just want to say one thing, so fifteen hundred on the base, I was trying to get, trying to fix your problem, I mean, trying, and Mr. Dalton has a plan over a period of years to, to put a thousand, I mean, trying to get that up systematically. We've kind of run out of projections for five years.
I mean, I'm on my second term, and, and two years, we've tried, and the other years, nobody tried, and you just take two steps back.
I would disagree with that, but that's my opinion.
Fifteen hundred on the base hasn't been done since 2008.
Well, the percentage, yeah, the percentage, I mean.
Here's the thing, to go back to the sixties, teachers make six percent less now, allowing for inflation than it did back in the sixties, they carry a heavier workload, they jumped in on the COVID thing, and pretty much, I thought, kind of did the impossible for some of them, I mean, they didn't even get a bathroom break, some of them did. Some of them didn't until the end of the school year. And it's kind of hard to imagine. You know, we were sitting here as a board back in the fall thinking, we're kind of helpless. What can we do? Everybody's doing all these things. What can we do to help them? You know, the only thing we could come up with, I don't know if you want to give the board credit, administration or all of us or what, we came up with new computer equipment and, and new boards, but...
And we paid them, and we paid them a thousand in the fall.
Yeah. We need to do better for the teachers. I've been preaching that since the day I opened the door. It's time to do something. Now, whether three thousand dollars is the right amount, I don't know, but we, we can do better and then we need to look to the state to do the rest.
On the circle bag, I was to add on another number on that. When you look at total benefit package as a part of salary, it's twenty, depending on where it's, oh, it's twenty-five, twenty-six percent. It was not the Medicaid number though. That's off the non-certified, as far as getting that number on the file.
And see, Troy touched on it and I touched on it a while ago. I want to walk in a room and talk about teachers or I want to walk in a room and talk about bus drivers or maintenance. You get all confused when you start talking about all the other things. It's just a bunch of smoke and you can't get through it all. You just need to talk about teachers. The non-certified and the teachers do not have to be tied together. And I know there's a difference in opinion on that.
Our community is very...
I think that's the conversation we had last year. I mean, I think that's where we got to last year. Because we left one group behind.
Absolutely.
And then you're making that jump to catch them up. I just, in my mind, that's what's fair.
And I don't think anybody was about to say that.
Because I mean, if I do that so many times, now it's left in behind.
I don't think anybody disagrees that they deserve the best, but I think we have to be reasonable.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
The salary committee was also told by Dr. Dial that he wanted his plans or intentions were to add another fifteen hundred to the base next year. Um, so you're look, so apparently as of next year, he thought three thousand on the base was sustainable. So you're only doing that if you're in advance.
A thousand, I think, but I think it was a thousand.
The committee was told fifteen hundred this year, fifteen hundred next year, and then another five hundred is what I heard when I was sitting in the salary committee meeting. So as of next year, he thinks three thousand on the base is sustainable. So you're only looking at a one-year increase from what they're planning on doing a year from now. That's what I was told as a member of the committee.
If you could give, say, I don't know, pull a number out, eight percent this year. And you see next year, and you're going to know a lot more next year at this time of the year, that you've done too much. Well, you've got to give some step. You don't have to go, you don't have to go give them the other thousand. This is upfront, you've got it, it's, it's coming, you know you've got it, it's not a false promise. I mean, I have heard for two years, it's always down the road for the teachers. We, we, we get up to the end of the year, we can't afford it. We get up to the end of the year, we can't afford it. But yet, the money's always there in, in the year-end figures.
Can I, care if I say something? Do you have time to say something?
Go ahead.
Okay. So whenever you mentioned, you know, why would teachers reject the thou, the three thousand? What, the email that we got stated very clearly that the three thousand would probably not count toward our retirement. And that is where, where you invoke the fear and say, well, then I don't want that. I want something that is going to count toward my retirement. So when we got that email, a lot of people got very, very nervous about that and said, oh, I don't want the three thousand. It's not going to help me in my, in the long run, my retirement. Whereas a step, whereas an increase on the salary schedule will help me. And I think a lot of that is where you get the teachers changing their minds too and saying, oh, yeah, I don't want that, I want this instead.
The email said that...
And I don't know if you all realize that that went out to us that said, you know, this will, this three thousand will not count towards your retirement.
Email said it was being reviewed by PSRS and they would have to review the contract in order to see if it would be PSRS eligible.
And then it would depend upon the wording of the contract. And so then you get that fear of, well, who's wording the contract? Do they want us to take this and do they want it to count on our retirement or not? Because it's going to be entirely up to them.
But that was going to be, but I, I think, I think what the, what the majority of the teachers actually want and what they know is that a one-time thing, yeah, that might be for one year. Maybe that goes towards your salary for that year, but that's not, that's not reoccurring, right? So that does not, this, this fifteen hundred dollars would be on your salary every year. In turn, helping your retirement more in the long run than what that three thousand would, is that...
If we go back and look at the video from April first, Dan asked, this three thousand and one thousand is separate from sal, from raises, correct?
I agree with that.
Dial said twice, yes, I never thought that it was part of the raises. And then we turned around and we made it part of the raises.
Listen, that's what I was saying before. It's separate from the raise, but I'm still taking four hundred fifty thousand dollars out of the pot. So I mean, it impacts the raise. That, that, that's the...
So this raise may look entirely different.
I've got to pull that money from somewhere.
But it's still made part of the raise, which was not what was said at that meeting. It was said very clearly, this is not part of the raises. And it was agreed upon that that was not part of the raises. Then when you take fifteen hundred of it, you say, okay, I'm going to take fifteen hundred of this three thousand that you thought you were going to get and I'm going to make that part of your raise.
Okay, hang on. So just for clarification purposes, can, we've got to vote on the motion. Can't amend the motion.
I can amend the motion. After the motion is seconded, I can amend any motion.
And it can be voted down or approved?
I, that's not the way I understand it. I kind of, I tried to look it up, but I thought the motion had to be voted on.
And Robert, the rule of parliamentary procedure, a motion can be amended after it's seconded.
Okay. By the person.
Yeah, by the person.
No, 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 by somebody else.
So every time I make a motion, you can amend it to however you want and then we have to vote that way?
No.
Okay.
If it doesn't get voted, then have to vote accordingly.
I can amend a motion that you made.
That means you, if you never wanted my motion to pass, you could amend it every time I made a motion. That does not work. You can do it every time I ever make a motion and it would never pass. Because you could put something, anything you want on it and it would never pass. That does not make sense.
You got to let me talk for a minute. I can amend a motion. It has to be seconded and then the board will vote on the amendment to make the, that a part of the motion or to not make that a part of the motion. And then we come back and we vote on the main motion.
Okay. Ms. Fay, did you have something to add? I'd like to speak.
I'm going to show up and teach school next year, just like I always do, no matter what you do, whatever decision you make. But please do what's best for the district, regardless of the noise. Please do what's good for the district and the school. I, I lived through budget cuts several years ago when we had locked schedule, we did budget cuts. We lost a teacher from every department. And I just don't want, my fear is that will happen down the road someday if we're not careful about what we do right now. So my only request is just, please do what's good for the districts. I mean, teachers are important and support staff are important. I don't want them, anybody to be left out, but you've got to think, in my opinion, long-term, your responsibility is, is to do what is good for this district and do what's good for the kids long-term.
I agree, thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask again. What is sustainable? At the top of your sustainable list?
I would hope that you would give us the top of the sustainable.
That's what I was, that's what I was hoping, that we would try to come to something. Is that how I...
I felt like I shot strong at four hundred, or close to four hundred grand.
And seven hundred thousand of new money recurring. If over seven hundred?
Well, I mean, I, I thought, I mean, you know, we're trying to get summer school payout. We're trying to, you know, we've already got subpay out. We've got, I mean, trying to do something with insurance. I mean, I felt like I, we shot pretty strong at close to four hundred thousand.
But you're also basically promising another fifteen hundred next year.
I didn't, I'll disagree with that. I said a thousand, but I may, maybe on this...
Even a thousand, we're sitting on twenty-five. And I've dealt with you for a number of years and I know you always have a little wiggle room.
It's not my wiggle room, it's his.
Yeah, but there's always some wiggle room.
I also think that he's done a pretty good job managing a budget. He kept us in good shape, even through all this.
So this, this one, this, that's the man we need to thank for that.
I agree.
Because our school's in really good shape financially.
So would this be your recommendation then, Dr. Dial?
This is my recommendation.
This is your recommendation, okay.
Lowell has it.
On the subject of sustainability, how much do we get paid for school lunches through the current program overall for this year?
The new one?
This year and next year.
Which one?
This is fourth one? Okay.
So...
Right now, under current.
Thank you, because I didn't know that.
Which is everybody getting free lunches.
I've asked repeatedly, uh, how much those lunches are costing and nobody ever really says. But I'm going to pull a rabbit out of the hat and say it's two-thirds. We're making about two dollars a meal times a thousand meals every day, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year for next year.
We, we've lost money every year in food service. I'm hoping to break even. We've lost about fifty thousand dollars every year to food service.
It's all the government pays until September twenty.
I, I understand that.
Okay. But a year from now, so we should break in over three hundred thousand dollars just on the lunch program.
One time?
Right. I'm telling you how to get from here to there.
But Mr. Johnson, I mean, our, our program costs are up because our salaries are up. I mean, I'll be able to give you a better idea what that looks like in June, but, I mean, we've increased our expenses and we were already losing fifty thousand a year. Now, do I think this, the, the National School Lunch Program is going to help us? Absolutely. Do I think we can make some money? Absolutely. But I don't think that's a, a sustainable place to, to go get and pay salaries.
Then there was another revenue stream you were talking about for after-school lunches or carryout. So how much did you think that was going to be?
It depends on how much participation you have. I can't, there's no way to predict that at this point. I think it'll pay for itself.
When you said it was revenue made?
It, I think it'll pay for itself, for sure, it'll pay our employees. I mean, I don't know because I've been running. I mean, schools tell me it generates revenue, but you've got to have the numbers drive it too.
And then another thing, uh, about three, three years down the road probably, we're going to be able to probably pay off our debt, which is four hundred and forty thousand dollars every year. So there's another revenue stream coming in three years down the road that you don't currently have.
Correct, and that's to help.
Go ahead.
You would have to let me rerun that with the new numbers. I mean, we just changed that projection drastically.
So...
With that projection, I mean, that's what just we...
That isn't, so we are, we are subsidizing part of this, our plan is to subsidize part of this raise through S R two, S R three, until we can pay off those lease purchases that will help sustain it. Because it goes away in twenty-four, so he's going to have to carry the load in twenty-five. And paying off those lease purchases is part of carrying that load.
Because that reintroduces, that's what you're talking about, reintroduces four hundred and fifty into the, into the...
And we figured that in those projections.
I mean, that, that payout projection, again, that's impacted by wherever you land on.
That's with this projection.
I've sat here a bit cautious. You know I've been cautious before about what I said and what we should or shouldn't do. We are not going to bankrupt the school if we do this. There's all, okay, we got to spend eight hundred thousand dollars on air conditioners, eight hundred thousand on, what is it called, learning recovery?
Learning loss.
Learning loss. There's still another three hundred thousand dollars there. Then there's going to be another three point nine million dollars coming in S R funds. We're not going to bankrupt the school here.
S R funds aren't here for life.
I agree.
They're not. And the, the air conditioner you just said, that's, that's a one time.
If you see...
We're talking recurring.
The thing about the air conditioners does pay you back over the years. It probably pays you fifty thousand dollars a year because you got all the equipment and all the costing. And that's money that you're going to, again, deploy to the revenue stream.
And that's just a chip off of what that motion was, clearly. So I think we've got a motion on the table, a motion amendment.
I, I would change my amendment to two thousand on base. And you can, you can ask for a second now.
Okay. To that, each of you makes the amendment to the, to set the original motion of rescinding the board's April first approval of three thousand and one thousand and amends it to adding two thousand on the base.
And that includes the thirty dollars that was going to go on the insurance?
Yeah, that does away with thirty dollars on the insurance.
Okay. You're not...
So you're doing, you're not doing thirty on the insurance?
So you're only adding four seventy is what we're adding to the base from the fifteen hundred? Is your...
Yeah, something like that.
Or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, if you do away with the thirty on the insurance, it would be, it would be adding four seventy to the, to the fifteen hundred.
I don't see, like Aaron said earlier, he said, you've got everything established, salaries are established, we can add at any time, correct?
So you can now...
You said earlier, our salaries are established, you can add at any time, correct, to those salaries?
For example, a teacher contract. So when they turn those contracts in, you're just working off of, you're currently adopting a salary schedule, right?
So if we do what, yeah, so if we do what the teachers recommend and you guys come back and say, hey, the numbers look great, we've got more money here. I mean, why are we doing something now we haven't even ran the numbers on? I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, the teachers are very sincere and I totally appreciate what she said.
Absolutely.
And I, but the teachers are only going based off what somebody tells them is correct. There's enough here to give everybody twenty-five hundred dollars, period. That's what I originally came in here and I wanted, so we, we've had it around two thousand, two thousand.
Okay, so there, do I have a second on Lowell's amendment?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
So you're only voting on the amendment first?
Mm-hmm, on the...
Just on the amendment.
Amendment to the motion. The rank amendment or...
We're not voting on his motion, we're only voting on his amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Correct.
To put two thousand on base.
To bump, to bump the, uh, the increase on the base from fifteen hundred to two thousand and to do away with the increase in sick pay.
Decrease.
Oh.
Insurance.
Insurance, decrease.
So, so you're only adding hundred and forty dollars to, it's all you're doing?
Mm-hmm.
So you're eliminating everything on this list?
No.
No. Teacher, teachers current, no, the teachers currently get four seventy on their, on their health insurance. And on this list, it was to bump it to five hundred. But not all the teachers take the health insurance, so some of them feel it's unfair because the ones that do the health insurance get more than what they do.
Where did you get your hundred and thirty more? It's a, so if you take fifteen hundred plus three sixty, which was the bump on the health insurance, eighteen sixty. There's the hundred and forty.
And that way, all the teachers do get it? Well, they're insured by the score now.
Now, just as a reminder, we've got to, so there's federal legislation. And since we've held our insurance costs the same, we'll probably be able to pay for a year. But there, there is federal legislation about a minimum affordable plan. So we have to provide so much, I mean, there's a calculation, there's a calculation we have to run. Kelsey has to run.
If, if it becomes necessary, we can change it.
Any further discussion on this? I, I would just like to add, I, I think that all of this is, uh, I think the right process to do this is to run this through our administration, our superintendent team and the salary committee. And we have a recommendation from him that the vast majority of the teachers support. I think it's a little reckless to change that without having to run those numbers accurately. We're getting several different numbers and, and that's just my opinion. Any other discussion?
I wasn't called to have any numbers run. So I mean, when do we do that, Mark? When do we, when does the board, no, they, you know, we are the board, we make the decisions. So we take recommendations by the superintendent, by committees. But we do make the decision, but when did we have a chance to do that?
That's our study sessions this morning. That's our study sessions this month.
Speaking of study sessions, does that mean we're going to meet and discuss the budget behind closed doors?
Small groups listening for seven days?
I, I have never been an advocate of, nothing personal.
Yeah.
I just think it should be out in the open where everybody can hear, just like we're doing it tonight. Let everybody hear. We don't have, if there's nothing to hide.
We, we do that. We do that. In a, in open session, we have the small group study sessions per, but anyway, it's off subject. So no further discussion on that. Motion at hand, Lowell's amendment. I'm going to take a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion, the amended motion fails four to three. Now we'll need to vote on Seth's original motion to revoke the April first decision to add incentive, three thousand certified, one thousand and non-certified. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes four to three. Now I guess we have this recommendation. Is this something that we want to go ahead and do right now or we'll take a motion or we can move on?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to accept basically the recommendation, the recommendation the salary committed, salary committee presented to us.
Seth makes a motion to accept the, the recommendation that's been presented tonight. Do I have a second? Chance seconds? Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Four in favor. All those opposed? Three opposed. Motion carries four to three.
I would also like to verify, so with this, with this increase as far as the non-certified, are the bus drivers getting the same thing? The three point five one percent on base and mileage?
Yes.
So they're already getting that?
It's in their contract.
Okay. But now are they also getting what we just voted for, for the uncertified on the opportunities for the three hundred and thirty-three dollars?
That was not part of-
Okay. I would like to make a motion on that as well. I mean, I, I'm, I don't like what they said about how we need to jump and this group needs a bunch this time, this group needs a bunch this time. You know, I want to do fair forward.
They do come in for training, you know, eight hours. Is that what it is, Larry?
Yeah.
So is that something that, is that what you're saying Seth, that you'd like that, that three?
Yeah, I mean, if non-certified, the bus drivers should get it too, in my opinion. There is much of this-
You could do it on that training day.
Is it requiring?
It's required training. That they don't, that they currently don't get paid for. They just have to come in to keep their lives.
Those would be bad.
What, since we're talking about the buses, what about that thousand that you were promising them during the campaign?
Who?
You.
Promising who?
Several of the bus drivers. You was going to get them a sign up, signing incentive bonus is what I heard from several people.
Signing incentive? Where did you hear that? I'm not here to talk about hearsay. If you got some-
Okay, Judy in the apartment.
Judy, did we ever have a talk about a thousand dollar signing?
Did you have a signing incentive proposed to you? You didn't. Really?
Every, every discussion I have with Judy was moving fair and equal forward.
And it, so there was no signing incentive for any bus drivers?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I really don't know what you mean signing incentive.
It's okay.
Okay. Your motion is, how'd you get the motion reported? Did you make a motion Seth?
Uh, I guess I'd like to make a motion, yeah, to include the bus drivers in the three hundred and thirty-three dollar.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
And could you read that one more time?
Off contract to bus drivers, the three hundred and thirty-three dollar summer training, professional development.
Will that, will that line up with their training day?
Also good.
For eighty seconds, any discussion?
Will that, will that line up with their training day?
Yeah, so that would be what I would, I mean, except for Mr. Dalton, but I would, they're, they're here for eight hours one day anyway. So I would-
So that F two, three hundred and thirty-three, like not turning F two to three?
How much do they currently get paid for that?
Nothing. It's part of, it's part of their requirement for their licensing.
It's in the contract.
It's in their contract that they perform it or bring it or something.
We have that, Peter?
Yes. Off, yes.
So in their con, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Seth made the motion for any seconds? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried seven zero.
So their, their contract is already laid out, so they will receive the three point five one percent. Doesn't need to be voted on because it's already set in their contract on the base and miles. Unless you just wanted to vote on it, that's already set in the contract.
I just want to make sure that's in there as well.
The next year's contract. Okay, so next on the agenda items was the MSBA twenty twenty-one A policy update.
It's just informational only. You'll vote on it next month. They are uploading for your review. Just like we always do, we don't vote on them the same. We've got policies, regulations and forms in the three different folders in the folder, in the main folder. So it's for you to review. And there's a, a word document in there that's kind of synopsis of all of them and what they do.
Any further discussion on that? Last agenda item is committee assignments.
So these are our current committees and the assignments of the current board members. If you would like to change a committee or be added to one, please email Mrs. Sterling so she can update this and give it to you next month.
On the policy thing, I was a little bit slow.
Twenty twenty-one A?
Well, I did go ahead and I just want to pass this out. I sent a letter to Susie Goldhammer to clarify a couple of our policies and she never did respond back. I was just wondering if possibly you, Aaron, can get with them and try to get my questions answered. They're on the piece.
Okay, so we'll get back to DJ on the committee assignments. Any discussion on that? That would conclude our meeting. Just need a motion to adjourn. Oh, first of all, the next meeting will be Thursday, June seventeen, twenty twenty-one, six thirty, here in Florida. Anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn? Seth makes a motion. Do I have a second? Dan seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry seven zero. Thank you all. I apologize.